Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 3rd Board of Selectments meeting. Seven o'clock, I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, citizens input. Seven oh five, possible action, dog hearing appeal. Mark and Lisa Brennan versus Town of Foxborough. Seven ten, Jared Craig, Nella Rodriguez, Foxborough Cultural Council. Seven twenty, presentation, Bill Yuchna, Article Six, High School Track and Stands. Seven forty, motion to reopen town warrant to add article for sewer for Borough School project. Seven forty-five, discussion, possible action, town warrant articles and proposed fiscal year nineteen budget. Eight oh five, approved firefighter contract. Eight ten, Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. Eight twenty, discussion, possible action, draft policy to establish mandatory training for child sexual abuse awareness. Eight thirty, Selectments update. Eight forty, Town Managers update. Eight fifty, Assistant Town Managers update. We have a bunch of action items. Around nine fifteen, we'll adjourn to go into executive session. We have three items first, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for contract renewal, non-union personnel, Finance Director Rainie Scollins. Number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for contract renewal with union, ASME DPW. And number three, to conduct strategy sessions relative to pending litigation. Because we're...
After our chairman, just to let you know, on the above, on the agenda, respect to the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, we'll probably just merge those two items together because it turns out that there was a little misunderstanding about whether they want additional time from the beginning, so, in terms of our presentation. So, I guess it'll just be one, just one item. Okay?
So, because we have Jay Barrows in the audience tonight. Jay, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance to...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit past seven. Is anybody here for citizens input?
Is it the chairman or is it today?
Either one. Either one's fine.
Hi, Stephanie McGowan, Nineteen Roads Lane. I just wanted to come before the board of selectmen tonight to make you aware of an incident that happened once at the Advisory Committee meeting, which I am a member of. I wanted to speak as a citizen, not as an advisory committee member, on an issue that was being discussed. So, I spoke with Frank Spillane, the moderator. I was given an okay. I was told that I needed to step down from the table, accuse myself, sit as a citizen. If I was called upon, I had to follow the rules of the meeting, how the meeting was held. I waited till the end, raised my hand, I was called on, said who I was, said that I sat on the committee, but I was not speaking as a committee member. And at that time, the town manager and the town finance director began to yell at the chair, yelled at myself, that I was not to be able to speak, that I had a conflict. I then told them I had spoken with Frank. They refused to listen to anything I had to say. And so, I was, I also got a verbal from the Attorney General's office. I was told that Frank was absolutely correct, and that I was able to speak. So, I know they answered to this board, and why I'm, I know there's, I'm not on the agenda, so I'm not asking for any conversation back and forth, but just to make it known that as a taxpayer, I was basically silenced, and I would hope that in the future, myself or any other taxpayer who would like to speak at any committee meeting is allowed to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here for citizens input? Whatever your pledge is.
Thank you. My name's Rich Noonan.
My name's John Hurley.
And we're the co-founders of the former Foxborough Against Diabetes 5K Road Race, which we've held for the past seventeen years. We made notification last year that last year's event was going to be our last year.
We wanted to come in front of you today to thank you for your support for the last seventeen years. We're very excited that Foxborough Cares is now taking over our time slot that we've, you know, pretty much, you know, owned for the last seventeen years. We're excited. We're here to offer our support in any way, but more importantly, grateful that someone's taken that time slot because it's been such a great community event for Foxborough. We wanted to make it known and make sure everyone knew how grateful we were.
And through your support and the community's support, we were able to raise three hundred ninety thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars for the diabetes research. It just shows you what a great community Foxborough is in it. Almost every year, we had close to a thousand runners come onto our event, and it really was, for us and a lot of families, an event that they focused on to come out the Saturday after Memorial Day, right before Founder's Day. So, it made it like a three-day, three-week event for the beginning of the summer. So, we wanted to thank you.
Thank you for, for all your efforts. And I think we'll, this will be a good time to take an action item out of order, and that would be action item number seven. Doug, could you read?
Yep. Move to approve public event application for Foxborough Cares 5K Road Race on six two eighteen, from ten AM to twelve PM.
Second. Motion made, second. Whether the discussion?
Under discussion. At this point, I'm going to recuse myself, and if I could go to the table since I am the applicant.
Yep.
Speak as a citizen.
Resident?
Sure. Thank you, members of the board. For the record, speaking of the residential developments, obviously, we'll go back a little bit. So, we presented an application to the Board of Selectmen to continue the road race on January second. So, we'll go back a little further. For about ten years, the JCs ran this race. I don't know if many people remember that, but they, they started this, they ran it for about ten years, and the proceeds went right into families and things that people needed. When they decided to shift gears a little bit, Richie and Jonathan came over for the FAD and ran it for seventeen years. So, as many residents did, I ran it, and we finished last year, and said, what a shame for it to end after such a long, positive impact on the town. So, we got together eighteen people, and we formed a, we're forming a 501(c)(3). And it's, it's a pretty neat partnership. It's, the beneficiary of this is two parts. One is going to be the Marilyn Rodman Forming Arts Center at the Orpheum, and the other one is going to be the Foxborough Police Relief Association. Both are non-501(c)(3), so we're going to come together, and the proceeds that we bring in are going right back into the community, either through programs at the Orpheum or through the Relief Fund Fund that the police set up to aid families and scholarships and things like that. So, Richie and Jonathan was very nice to us. We have never, I keep saying run a road race, but we organize a road race. We've been meeting just about every, every week or every other week. The name of the race is the Foxborough Cares 5K. And where Foxborough Cares comes from, if you remember, Jack Othlet came to, in front of us with this concept that Foxborough Cares be kind of a signatory emblem throughout town for anything that good can come through that. There was a high school student, Lindsey Kunniff, that came up with a logo, and that was a few years ago, and it just kind of sat. So, we've grabbed that, and that's going to be our emblem. We've got a website set up. We're already kind of running pretty fast with the different organizations. We're hoping, I think at your peak, you had about twelve, thirteen hundred runners?
Yeah.
Right after the Boston Marathon bombing, it was peaked. We're trying to get a thousand runners into the program. We're running it identical. It's going to be June second, on the Saturday, after Memorial Day and before Founder's Day. So, we're going to grab that spot, just like FAD, Foxborough Against Diabetes did. And the running groups from the elementary schools still get the benefit of, you sign up in one flat rate, it's a few hundred dollars, and as many runners as we can. So, all about community, and we're hoping that if we can get the word out, there's some, some decent interest in it, and we can continue for another fifteen, seventeen years. So, in front of you, there's an application. It was signed off by the police chief, the DPW director. It's got the police detail plan and all the insurance numbers in there.
Great. So, motion's been made, it's been seconded, had the further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck, Jim.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, a little bit after, ten past seven. Seven oh five, possible action, dog hearing appeal. Mark and Lisa Brennan versus Town of Foxborough.
So, I'll try and address this issue. I actually asked Sue to be here just more as a resource, more than anything here. The action that the board took two weeks ago relative to the Mark and Lisa Brennan dog matter, in which their dog, Lacy, was, was actually, the action was taken by this board to, to euthanize the dog, and they, the family had a period of about, had an appeal period which they exercised, and then has put us on notice effectively as of Monday this past meeting yesterday. So, it wasn't on the agenda initially, but it was amended yesterday to include this, which is allowed for under the statute. And so, the only action that's before the board is that, and this is, I think, explained to you by Town Council at the last meeting, that appropriate action, if in fact they do appeal, that the dog be, that the, that the board place an empowerment order pending the, pending the appeal process. And so, that's the action that, that we're requesting at this time before the board.
Any questions for Sue?
What is the process of, so we vote to allow you to do this?
Right.
So, what it is?
You're, since you're the, the dog, dog hearings and are actually held by the Board of Selectmen, you're the authorizing board to do this, so therefore, the action before the board would be to, the request before the board is to impound the dog pending the outcome of the, of the appeal process.
How long will the appeal process take typically?
We've done this once, I think it was in the neighborhood of four months.
And who pays, the owners of the dog pays the fees to have the dog impounded?
Yes, if, 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 if the order is upheld, the owner pays. If, if not, then it's on the town. However, we have a, we pay a flat rate to Mansfield to use the shelter.
So, by, you said if the order is upheld, so they can appeal our decision again to impound the dog?
Well, no, what's happened is now is that the, the action before the court is to overturn the euthanize decision. And so, would effectively mean it would overturn the board's action.
Okay.
And then it would turn the dog to the, to the owners. So, it's difficult to say how, how the order will come out pending that action, but if in fact the dog gets returned to the owners, then potentially, the town could be on the hook for the, for that cost. But as Sue points out, we actually play a fat, pay a flat fee for the use of that facility.
Okay.
If the dog, if the town loses the court case, and the dog is returned to the owner, right now you have an order that to be, to be muscled and leash at all times. What happens to that order?
That order is probably expired. It's, I can only issue it for fourteen days, and then it expires.
Okay, so, so if the dog is returned to the owner, then nothing can be done if and until the dog does something else?
I'm not sure if the, if the judge does not uphold, uphold the town's order, do they, do they issue their own order?
Well, it, it's difficult to say because the, the court could actually come on, come up with a different alternative, or could remand it back to the town for further consideration. So, it's difficult to say until the order was actual, until action's actually taken by the court. But, so, we're not in a position to really say what the, what the action might be at this point.
But we have our own attorney at the time?
We would, I would think we would. It's, it's, this doesn't happen very often, quite honestly. So, I think that the board's action should be defended, and so, and we've already advised Town Council of the, of the pending action and alerted her to the, to the case.
So, that the attorney would be prepared to ask the court?
Yes.
To reinstate the muscling and leashing?
Well, that action would still probably come back to this board, I would think. Or, and being remanded to the board would mean that you would have to come up with a different alternative in terms of action, because obviously, the, the court thought that action, the action that you took would be inappropriate for the, for the measure taken, if that comes to that situation. But I don't believe that the court can actually impose its own will on the situation. That's really the board's decision.
So, where's the dog now? Is it at the home? And who's going to go to the home and retrieve the dog?
I would.
With, with an escort.
With a question, with a police beat?
Yes, with an escort. No, we wouldn't send it by ourselves.
And if we vote yes, that would happen tomorrow, or do you have to give them notice?
However long the court process takes to get it.
But I guess what he's, how soon would that happen? That could happen...
So, if we voted yes tonight, would you go there tomorrow?
I think we'd probably do it tomorrow, only just want to make sure we accept the proper notice and documents prepared.
To impound the dog?
Right.
There is some court process for it?
Well, no. What, what happens is that the, you know, the board actually creates its order, and then we would, we would then advise Town Council, and they would submit it to the court, and then they would, they would have that order in place, which means the board, then the board could, then the animal control officer would, would retrieve the dog at that point. I don't know if there's a, an appeal of that process, that, that I don't know. I think the, it was the, the will of the board, at least at the last discussion, that obviously, safety was the biggest concern here, and that was, that's what we're trying to prevail upon the situation at this point.
Any questions?
Yep. Move to impound Mark and Lisa Brennan's dog, Lacy, pending outcome of the appeal.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Just under discussion. We make an motion to impound the dog, because that's under the bylaw. Make an motion to authorize them to defend it in court?
Well, we would do that anyway. I think that the, because, because the board took the action that it did, we would, if they took action to appeal it, then we would automatically defend it anyways.
I thought the way that our bylaw is written, that if it's an appeal, then it's already stubbed out about the dog without our action. I could be wrong, but I...
Well, the only, the only issue, yeah, yeah, the only, the only issue really is the impounding, because there was no action taken by the board at the last meeting to do that.
Okay.
That's, that's all, we're just clarifying that point. Okay?
Thank you.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. None?
Thank you. Thank you, Sue.
Seven nineteen, Mr. Craig, Foxborough Cultural Council.
Hi, my name's Jared Craig. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the co-chair of the Foxborough Cultural Council. And just before I nominate my friend Neela, I want to thank those of you who could make it to our grantee reception at the Marilyn Rodman Forming Arts Center last weekend. It was a great success, and we were just happy to have board members and members of the community in attendance. So, thank you. And now, I'm here to nominate my good friend, Neela Rodriguez. She is an active mother in town on the board of the Moms Club, and I think she'll bring a great energy and excitement to the cultural council, and I'm going to let her speak for herself.
Hi, I'm Neela Rodriguez. I've lived in Foxborough since two thousand and four, so it's been a long time. Love the new town hall, it's great. It's come a long way, almost got lost. I'm like, which building do I go to? So, I'm currently vice president on the Moms Club. I've been treasurer there for the last two years now. Also troop leader for the Girl Scouts, for the Daisy Troop, for my daughter, so I'll be looking for, anybody looking for cookies. I, I see the Foxborough Cultural Council as a wonderful opportunity just to bring arts and science and humanities to everyday lives in the Foxborough community, and I look forward to working with them and developing some programs to enrich the community.
Questions from the board?
No.
Neela brought a nice group of kids to the talent show, and it was very successful. Nice group.
Yeah, I think, I think it's great how, how the council has grown, particularly after, you know, really in the last three or four years. Something has to do with you, I think. But it was, it was a really nice event last weekend or two weekends ago. You guys are doing a lot of good things, and I, I said at the, at the meeting, there's no committee in town that does more with us. So, keep up the good work.
Thanks so much. Great group.
Motion?
Move to approve the appointment of Neela Rodriguez to the Foxborough Cultural Council for a term starting four three eighteen and expiring four three twenty-three.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck. Good luck. Seven twenty, Bill Yuchna, Article Six, High School Track and Stands.
So, just by way of introduction, Mr. Chairman, this was an article that's on the, on the, on the warrant for consideration at the annual town meeting. The board had requested at the last meeting that they'd like to see a presentation on this particular item. This is an article which is separate, is a separate article by virtue of the fact there was discussion this past year about items that require, actually, this one's actually an excessive million dollars, so, so that would be consistent with what has been discussed in the past year. Second of which, it's one that's been discussed, it's on several different occasions, and so, it's one that I think requires explanation and information for the public to understand, and for the board, of course, to, to understand before you take action on it. So, return to Mr. Yuchna and Amy Britos, superintendent schools.
So, by way of explanation, we wanted to go back and look over the course of the last five years and what has taken place in regards to the athletic complex at the high school. And in two thousand thirteen, that was really the beginning of three phases of what's taken place to where we are today. And during that first phase in two thousand thirteen, that was the beginning of this project, where we had the funds from the high school renovation project, as well as from fundraising and donations, and from the NFL grant that took place in order to begin the Turf Stop Foundation and to be able to have our field of where it is today. As part of that phase, in two thousand fourteen, in the spring, the baseball and softball fields, the development took place, again with funding from the renovation project, and we were able to have the field in place, as well as the baseball and softball fields. Installation of the scoreboard went up at that time as well, thanks to a donation from the Spinney family. And then Phase Two began in the summer of two thousand fourteen. At that time, the electrical substation, as well as the installation of transformer and power panels, were put in place, and the installation of the Sam Burns Memorial Garden and the flagpole took place in the fall of two thousand fifteen. Throughout those first two phases, the, the last part of that second phase was the lighting that took place, thanks to Musco lighting and island lighting, and having really a much reduced cost in order to have that installation, to be able to light the field, which then made it to where it was accessible for much longer than the school day, and to be able to be used by many different, through recreation, through, through other rentals, to be able to use the field, because if it, if you don't have lights, you're not going to be able to really use the field to the extent that it needs to be used in order to continue to, to maintain that. So, the third phase is the concession stand in the bathrooms. That is to take place soon, but at the same time, we're looking towards the track to go around that with the construction, because to take the concession stand and to put that as far as the construction forward without being able to complete the project, it's going to be more costly, and it also prohibits us from being able to do many different things that will end up making a difference as far as taking funds to replace the field when the time comes. The field can last ten to fifteen years, and in order to replace that when the time comes, we need to be able to have the revenue to do that. But more importantly, really is, what we've talked about for a number of years now, is the safety of our students. And it is a community field, and to be able to have our students stay at the high school and to be able to stay in one place and not travel to the ahern as they currently do, brings a lot of things into play here. Busting students over to the ahern is a, is a safety issue. It also doesn't allow our students to be able to go right out of the high school, onto a field which is part of their high school experience. They're going over to the middle school while the middle school is still in session during the day. I'm hoping that you'll hear from, from some of our parents that are here to hear the other issues that can arise from that as well, that have to do with safety concerns. But another piece that I want to bring up is, you can't put a price tag on safety, just as you can't also put a price tag on when we think about the social, emotional well-being of our students, and there is something to be said to be able to go out of your school and to stay at your school and to be there for your peers, whether you're participating in any of lacrosse, or football, or track, or any of the sports that take place there. To be able to have a place that you're able to be with your peers, that is a connection for students, and it may be the only connection that some students have. They might not be participating in sports, but they're, they're with friends to be able to cheer on others, or just have a place, it's a safe place, to go and to be part of a greater community. So, it is an athletic complex for many different sports, but it's also a community field and used by our community members. And to be able to complete that project, where we're five years into this, is something that's for our families and for our community, and we feel that we should be able to have the community speak to that.
So, I'll take it a little bit further there. This obviously was brought to the school committee in two thousand and twelve by the Turf Stop Committee, and actually, this was the original drawing that came out after it was finalized as to where the turf field would be. There had been a number of, of locations that the turf field might have been, but again, because we were using the renovation when from the high school, it had to go into a field that we were renovating, so it was put into the front area where the baseball fields had been. But it had always been shown with the track and with the bleachers as a concept on it. As Amy just spoke to, the issue to date, and a rougher drawing, what has been done is obviously, the field went in first, the Sam Burns Memorial Area, which is, serves also as the flag, you know, standing area for the field with the actual scoreboard right here. This is roughly the location of where the concession stand and bathrooms will go, and we will obviously redirect, and this will be the main entrance into this field at that point in time. The track is in the pink, and also then the grandstands would be on this side. And obviously, the issue here is it is a site that's relatively tight, and wanting the ability to be putting the track in at the same time we're doing the concession, so that we have, you know, really worked out the landscape of it and make sure that we don't misstep anywhere as far as how that actually goes, and that it actually works the best with the site itself. So, not only would we take advantage of the site work contractors that we employed to do this for the track, we'd also use the same site work people to do the work around the concession stand itself. So, this is kind of the, the plan as it stands today, and as Amy said, we're multiple steps through this. In the original presentation that was done to the town, there was an actual handout, which I have a copy of, which obviously had the warrant article that was originally drafted. It had a second page which broke down Phase, we only called it Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Two spoke to the track and the bleachers and improvements that way, had the concession stand and the bathrooms in there. So, we've kind of juxtaposed some of the, the different phases, but ironically, back then, we were looking at this project being about a three point five million dollar project to the town overall, once we were completed. We have spent just about two million dollars, well, with the concession stand, we'll have spent just about two million dollars, and four hundred and... just about $2 million, and $461,000 of that was either through donations or in-kind, you know, funds that were given to the project. So, you know, I think we've done fairly well as far as what you can do on a fundraising point of view. And we're looking at 1.1 lane, which we advanced to a total of 3.1, but that includes also totally rebuilding the baseball, softball complex in the back. When you look at something like Adderall, which completed its process, which was about $3.5 million, similar concession stands, bathrooms, a nice grandstand area, you know, track and so on. If you take out just the baseball area and stuff like that, we're down to about a 2.5, donated about 460, we're down to about $2 million that the town is being asked to participate in as compared to, you know, what it's cost other communities to do. So I think, again, I think we've been fairly frugal on the process and how we get here, but, you know, it's either one of these, I guess the question really comes down to, five years into this, is this something that the town is willing to do or not? Because I don't know, you know, how long you want to wait, how far you want to push this. We've talked about the potential renewable, we've only brought in about 6,200 because we really can't rent it to people who want, you know, the full facilities and things that go along with what we're proposing here. But we have rented to smaller groups that, you know, could use it just for a turf field type of thing. That particular account is solely for the replacement of the rug when it has to be taken up. So again, the more we can put in that over the next five to 10 years, the less that that would cost the town to replace that turf field. So I would say, to this point, anything we can do to advance that fund as well will also be something that we have a return to at least. But obviously, we've lost five years in the process now as far as how much we can raise towards it. I think that's kind of our spiel, it has been for five years now, but I do believe there are a few people else that would like to speak to you as well about this.
Anybody like to speak?
Come up.
Yep, yep. Come up, state your name.
I'm Joe Cusack, I'm a Foxborough resident. I have three kids at the high school, and I also coach cross-country indoor and outdoor track. So I'm pretty involved from pretty much every angle with this process. I was at the advisory committee meeting last week, and I mentioned, I started getting to the other safety concerns about, you know, having a track at the Ahern, which, you know, is, I believe, has been there since the high school was over there. So it made a lot of sense at the time. You know, we do have a shuttle, to be fair, that takes kids from the high school to the Ahern, because of what it has to leave, because of where it fits in the bus schedule, it leaves at 2:10, so any kids that have to stay after school, run a little late, you know, we get five to 10 kids on that shuttle every day. We have 120 kids on the track team right now, boys and girls combined. In past years, we've had as many as 150, which is a huge percentage of the overall school population. So those kids have to get from, you know, the high school, mile and a half, two miles across town, which they do on foot, they run it, walk it, they hop in all the kids' cars, you know, however they get there, they get there. When they get there, today's a great example, we had practice over there, today it was 38 degrees and raining. I rolled up in my car, there were 85 kids standing on the track in 38-degree weather and the rain, because there's no shelter over there. You can hide under the bleachers, but it drips through, there's no perfect way to stay out of it. This year, the middle school did agree to allow us access to the bathrooms near the gym, I'm sure you're familiar with the school. So we can get in to get, you know, water out of water fountain or use a bathroom. Until this year, there's no running water facility, there's no bathrooms, we were using the soccer bathrooms that they put out for their games, you know, when they're convenient. So the kids are totally exposed, whether it's a day like today or 95 degrees, you know, we do have trainers at the meets when we have, you know, the competitions over there. Every day of practice, we're two miles from the trainer. You know, we are CPR and AED certified, we do carry AEDs and med kits, we're not doctors. In the five years I've been here, we haven't had anything happen. One of the gentlemen I coached with over there has been here longer and knows some things that have happened over time. Our best bet if something goes wrong over there is to call 911. We can't call the trainer, the trainer's just probably far away than emergency, so it really is truly, you know, I don't want to sit here and grandstand about, you know, it's an immediate risk or anything, but we do have these risks every day. It's hundreds of kids doing dozen, dozen events, five coaches, and we're scattered all over the place. It's just, it's, there's convenience of having the track at the high school, sure. Of course, it would be more convenient, of course, it would be easier for the kids, but it's also a real concern that they can't, you know, if we got a lightning storm, they can't run inside, you know, they can't, they've got to get out of there. We had to wait today, one kid had to get picked up, we stood there for an hour and waited with this kid in the rain until his parents came, because we can't leave a kid over there. If they're in the high school, they can go in, they have somewhere to go, they have somewhere to be, that they're where they are all day, because really, they're home. So, you know, from that standpoint, forgetting the facilities or how old they are and all that stuff, I won't, you know, belabor that, I don't hear about it, I can talk about it, but, you know, it really comes down to the kids, it's a massive population of kids relative to the high school. It's not, we're not talking about 20 kids, we're not talking about 30 kids, it's, it's, that was a fifth, about a fifth of the school does spring track, about the same number does winter track. We wouldn't have people run on the turf, which is great, but it's, we're running circles on the turf instead of running on a track. Other teams would be able to use it, you know, there's plenty of teams early in the season where the coach says, go out and run around the school two or three times, and they take their lacrosse cleats or field hockey cleats, and they go run on the road in cleats around the high school, because they don't, they can't throw sneakers on to run on the track. So, you know, there's a lot of benefits, not just for, you know, the teams that I'm involved with, but a lot of us. So, thank you, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any brave souls that want to bear their heart at the podium?
I guess I'll come up here too. I know many of you, my name's Rich Cormier, I am now a resident of the town, I'm the athletic director of the high school. And really, more or less, my position is really reiterating what both Amy and Bill said, as well as Coach Cusack. There's a number of safety issues which I won't again repeat. There's also some others that I think Coach Cusack is being nice about, that if we are going to remain at the Ahern for any amount of time, for our track programs, there needs to be improvements. So there's going to be a certain financial investment in terms of the safety of our, particularly our throwing events, which again, without getting into all the nitty-gritty of the vectors and, you know, where the shot put is thrown versus the discus, there are some real limitations there in safety. It's not a great facility for track. We also have some issues with our jumping pits and where they're located as well. Pretty much the beginning of every single season, we're dealing with a swamp over in that area. And our students really do not get access to those pits for weeks and weeks. They still, as we stand here, now this has been a unique weather situation, but they still do not have access to those pits, and they're still in the gym trying to practice their jumps in the meet on Saturday. So again, being at the high school and having that, you know, accessibility right then and there, is going to be a huge benefit to our students. Coach also mentioned other programs. This again will be a huge benefit to really our entire athletic program, and just having, you know, more of our student body engaged and involved in the events that are going on after school. You know, we do have a track meet, which is, if you've ever been to one, they're very impressive, they're pretty much just organized chaos, but they are very, very impressive in what's going on, and we very rarely have any students other than our participants watching these meets. Whereas if it was right there at the high school, it's going to increase that engagement level of our entire student body, you're going to have all the other student athletes that are already at the high school engaged in their practices also, you know, having the opportunity to cheer on their fellow classmates. In the winter, this would provide another avenue for us to use, because as we saw in February, it's 70 degrees, kind of hoping for some of that to come back. But we'd be able to use this track facility for our indoor track team as well, not just our spring track team, as they'd be able to go out there and prepare for their meets in the winter season as well. And then the last point I just want to mention, and I know it's already been mentioned, but I can't stress enough in today's day and age with the medical components. We do our best, we do have events all over the, you know, all over the fields and facilities that we have the ability to use, but not having a trainer there is a huge disadvantage to the track program, and it's a huge safety concern. Again, just like in other emergency situation, we certainly can call 911 and our emergency responders, but having that ability to have that personnel right there on our campus would be a huge benefit to our students, to our coaches, and just to the community in general. So I think that would be a, you know, something that I would stress from my point of view as the athletic director, that would sort of put me more at ease, is having all of those students right there after school with medical personnel available, without having to transport them across town. And I just think it would be a better experience for everyone involved. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions from the board?
You know, you brought up a good point about, you know, I'm taking a look at the, sorry, chair, sorry. Bill, where would the throwing events or, Coach, I don't know, be either on the schematic there? The throwing events or the pits?
They'd be behind the tennis courts, which are to this side. That's why we left that large field open to choose now as one of our practice fields, but it would be the area that we would have to discuss in the Javelin area, because it is a wide open area that we can control. It does, it backs down effectively would be the tennis courts, which have a nice football field.
Question. You had mentioned by doing this, be able to increase the rental, so what could you get in here after this is done that you couldn't do now with the turf and the lights?
Any kind of a tournament or activity for track, which requires, most track meets require an eight-lane track, the Ahern is a six-lane track, and it's one of the reasons we can't even host any of those type of competitions, because it's not, you know, in my safety sanction, they would effectively want an eight. So this is an eight-lane track, so we can do summertime track, you know, tournament things that they do, where they bring in groups from all over. To do that, we also could do, you know, leagues that are doing, you know, the full thing as well, where they have, you know, a number of groups there at the same time playing in multiple tournament play. The issue along that one really is having obviously places for, you know, people to sit and wait while you're waiting for your next event and take over an area.
So are these like MIA tournaments, like the soccer?
Some of those, some private tournaments that are done, a lot of the AAU groups have, you know, regular tournament things that they're looking for locations to play in. But, you know, again, I know some districts or some towns have done that and pursued it, I really can't pursue it at this point, because I just don't have the facility to go after it.
So are they, those other ones, other than the MIA stuff, are they looking for to use the field and have stands, or they're looking for the track and they're not going to use the field?
Some are looking for the stands, some are looking for the track and stands. Very few are looking for both, because they're obviously not compatible sports that way at the same time.
If this is built and you're able to rent out the space for, like you said, tournaments and everything, the money that you receive from the rental, would that, where would that be?
Again, when we started this whole thing, we set up a separate revolving account, and all that money goes into that account. So we don't, it's not used for anything else, so that's where it would go, which, you know, would be, its only purpose from that revolving account is effectively the turf replacement, I guess, I suppose the town could choose to use it for something else, but...
Okay. And I asked last year, when this was brought up at CIP, I was the director of the end of last year, I asked about fundraising, and I did not, when I asked it, I didn't expect anyone to fundraise selling cookies, like, for 1. whatever million dollars. But I did have a question on, why haven't you solicited any funds? Because I was told you weren't going to ask anybody to raise funds to contribute to this. That's what I was, that's what I was told. So my question is, why didn't you send out letters? I mean, you've had the Spiny family donated something, you know, you've had lights donated, you have, you know, but even just, and I'm not saying donate one, you know, raise 1.5 million dollars, I'm not saying that. But I think when you solicit funds and people show interest, I think it makes it a lot easier for town meeting to go along with this project, because interest is shown, and it's not just taxpayer money going to, going to this effort. It's, there's actually a want and a need and a feeling that this is a good project when you, when you can solicit funds. And that was my question last year, and it's my question again this year. Why didn't you, you know, solicit funds? And like I said, not for the 1.5 million, but even if you got 10,000, 15,000, that would, that would show that there was some interest.
Well, and I'm only going to speak for myself. I'm not, I'm not a professional fundraiser, my job is not to be a fundraiser, my job is to run the financial part of the school district, and I happen to do a few other volunteer things for the town as well. You know, if a group wanted to get together that was going to do that, one group did, they tried very hard, I thought they did a very good job, they raised $60,000, they turned it over and we moved on. My personal opinion is, we ask taxpayers and businesses in this town, donate to everything, which is no difference in a tax, in a different way, but you're just asking fewer people to do it. So I think the town got behind this project. I appreciate what you're saying, Jenny, as far as, you know, people having ownership, because then they take more responsibility to it. I think that was done at the very beginning of this project, I think it's been done in every phase that we've tried to go through here, as far as getting, I mean, the lighting thing was, quite honestly, was phenomenal. It was a $300,000 cost that the town paid $165,000 for. You know, Sam Burns' parents were very gracious by getting his roommate basically to help and give us the lights at cost, and then the company out of Norfolk that actually does all their installations up in the New England area donated the entire thing, and I mean, including concrete and everything, to do the installation. So, you know, we've been trying to get what we can as we go, and people, and I'll name a few, like people like Chris McNamara is for CMAC or something like that, they always are stepping up when we get into a project and donating their own services to us, but it's kind of like we have to show them what our next step is to see what, you know, what are the things they can help, help us with and do for us. But I guess I personally, as a taxpayer in town, feel that if this is a community field which has tremendous use during the summer and the spring and the fall with the youth sports especially, it doesn't belong to just one group, it belongs to everybody. And I really, I guess after a while, and we're all, we've all gotten hit up for the donations for everything that happens in town here, so that's constant. But I really think that it should be a shared thing, and it should be an equally shared thing. It's either we all agree that this is a great process of a way of things, something to do, you know, we're not talking about a, you know, 50,000 or 60,000, right, which I would agree wholeheartedly with you, as far as, when you start to get into a $3 million, you know, proposition here, the fact that the fundraising was what kicked this whole thing off and brought in, as I said, 461,000, the first group brought in 260,000 to get it going, and that's what got people motivated and pushed forward with it. So, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but I, as a taxpayer on the other side, I just feel like you're taxing me one way or the other, and if we're all going to do it, let's do it together.
Another thing, Senator Feeney had put money in the Senate budget. Jay, do you know, have any idea what? No, I know he put it in the Senate budget, but you didn't put it in the...
Yeah, we haven't seen it at this point, and it's more of a blind bill, and we don't, we can't see a few things, other things done yet, so I don't even know.
Okay, okay. Say, say it happens, okay. What would be the, say we got, maybe not all of it, but, say we got all of it, say a lot of money that you're asking, what would happen in that case?
Bring it back to town meeting and return what wasn't needed out of the funding that's proposed here, back to the conference, similar to what we've done with the ambulance received when something came in.
Okay, but you wouldn't use it for, you wouldn't use the funds appropriated by town meeting for something else, that we'd have to go back?
You couldn't, you couldn't do that, it's very specific.
We can all pray that the Senate bill goes through.
Be more than the prayer, I think.
Okay. For me, we did, I've done the shuttle into the Ahern for the track thing, all the baseball fields were being replaced, we shuttled to Payson, been there, done that. My only concern, by the way, this has been a long time coming, I have a concern because I've seen it in action when the softball team, the baseball team are playing and parking out back. When you have all those kids and all those events coming in, you have one way into the high school. Any thoughts about creating a second? into the high school. Any thoughts about creating a second means of egress? Because I know there've been, there's been injuries on the baseball field and the cars lined up on both sides of that fire line, you can't get an ambulance through.
Yeah, I, well, I think there's a couple of issues here. First of all, the high school has just around 500 parking spaces. It's, the Ahern has in the low to mid threes. And so we obviously know when we do a major game at the Ahern, that we're, we're packing that. So we actually have more parking sitting at the high school property. We bring in in a half hour twice and go out twice a day, those 500 cars. So the site's able to handle this and there's very few events that we would have 500 cars at. I think we are looking at other things to try to manage to our own budget and that, you know, the back parking is one of those to fix that and correct it. I think when it was done and obviously we didn't have the funding to pave it and go through the process, but what we were trying to do is get the base in there and get it well compacted. Well, it's, it's good, you know, and it's good shape now. So it is on one of the school's priority lists as far as if it has any funds available at the end of the year to look at, to do that, which I think would help. We also bought signs to make it so parking can only be on one side of that back road, which is really, if you notice, there's a yellow line that's kind of faded at this point, but it's a fire line that they're not supposed to be on the other side too. So I, you know, again, we're going to take some of those preventive things. The, we talked about and have strategized at different times, there is a side lot that comes in off of Carpenter Street that is the walkway, the path right now. And, you know, I think in the future, it would probably be wise to look at that to be a gated emergency exit, exit entrance and, you know, only type of thing so that if an ambulance or something needed to get in and there was a pressurized situation, they could do it and get through. But, and the town does own that property. So that is something that is feasible. Obviously, if we paved it, it would be a nice walk, better walkway than the kids have currently walking in and out of there. But again, I would say gated so that it's locked off and it's not regular traffic to Carpenter Street to interfere with the neighborhood that way. And, you know, again, I would, I would perceive that the fire department, police department would look at that as a positive, you know, when the full campus completed.
And the other question is, is this it for the build out of the campus? Is there, is there another phase? Is there anything else that we should be looking at?
Well, I think the only other thing that's been discussed for logical reasons is the potential locker room, you know, for the football team, all right, which is currently, as you know, in the basement of the IGO. Not a great situation for the IGO school itself. But the, kind of the beauty of it is, when we did do the renovations at the high school, we actually doubled the size of the locker rooms on the girl's side. So that does give us a capability for a away team, you know, meeting area. Our current locker room, although not ideal, can handle, you know, for game times. What I would say, my personal opinion and probably more from the building committee side of things, is that the building is perfectly structured to put just a block addition off of the current locker rooms. The space is there. But again, I don't, you know, I have no idea when that would be. That would really be kind of something that's pushed by the community again, as far as an issue they see. What we do currently is we use the Ahern's gym or locker rooms, which are developed and built strictly for a middle school. They were never built for a football team. So, you know, we do have, obviously, we can make things work. I think the first step is obviously to make the overall premises a better premises.
Well, if you don't, you plan on renting the facility out for tournaments and that money is designated to rehab the turf field down the road. What happens if you don't get those rentals? What is your plan for raising money? Because you, you might want to think about a plan B, just in case you don't get, you don't get rentals or you don't get as many rentals as you would like. Because you talked about, you talked about Attleboro has, well, I'm sure Attleboro is renting out their facilities.
Some towns don't. Some towns prefer not to do it just because they don't want the wear and tear on the facility.
Well, and that's, that's another.
No longer life on it, so.
And that's another question. Is it guaranteed that you will be renting out there?
Well, I think, I think our opinion, we have, every time someone's come to us, we have, you know, rented it if all of the things are there. I mean, we rent our buildings and try to generate to the town as much as we can there, just like recreation rents everything that we breathe. So, I mean, that's how the town has been built. We do it in a very controlled environment though, where we're the ones who have our staff there to maintain and manage facilities. And that's the only way I would do it because again, this is a very expensive facility that you don't want to get destroyed. So if we couldn't guarantee that we could do that, then I would, I definitely wouldn't want to rent it because I wouldn't want to be responsible for the fact that it could get, you know, ruined in some way. These are very hardy fields. I mean, they're not, you know, it's not a carpet that someone is going to take a razor, I don't think they could reach the carpet. They'd have to get through so much sand and rubber. So, but, you know, again, they do have lives, just like everything, and they're going to wear. But we do as best we can even just maintain the wear on it, so.
I mean, but you're selling this as this, the money that comes from, you'll be able to rent it out, the money that will be able to go to the field. I don't want in like 10, 15 years, come to town meeting, we need.
Well, I didn't say the right. Right at the beginning of this. I didn't say that we could guarantee that we would raise enough money. I said we would, we would, everything we raise would go towards mitigating the price of it. If this was done five years ago and you had 15 years, you had a pretty good shot of getting to that point. You're talking, the typical replacement on the rug itself is about $500,000. So, you know, but every day and every year we go by, the, all I'm going to be able to do at this point is have some funds to mitigate the cost of the town, you know, of replacing it. And when it gets to that point where it has to be replaced, again, every community organization uses that turf field. I'm assuming there'll be a pretty good, strong support for what they want to do with it, you know, as far as replacing it. But I am by no means guaranteeing that there's going to be enough money to replace it.
If you said the other, the other organizations also using the field, do they, do they donate to the field for maintenance?
I remember correctly, no, no, the schools take care of all the maintenance. We said we would do that from day one, which is the same thing we do with the tracks and everything else like that. That's in our budget to maintain and control. Our staff is the ones that are out there responsible for making sure things are done. DPW does help us obviously with trash and things of that nature. But as far as the overall scope of maintenance on any facility that the school uses, we maintain. The town side just gets to, you know, has the time to use it as well. So it's, that's totally on the, on the schools to, to control.
Couple of thoughts. Thank you. A very fair presentation. That was, so I look at it as positives and minuses in my mind. So the, when we were putting it in years ago, I think the concern was, is it going to be used? Is it going to be maintained? And I got to say, it's been used quite a bit and it's been maintained impeccable. Hats off to Kevin Corlos who treats it like his, his own yard.
Pretty sure it is. Pretty sure it is.
So it's interesting. I went to the high school sports presentation and broke up the rooms. A lot of families are using it now, don't remember the history of it, but they're, but they're quick to say, why wasn't it plowed off sooner? You know, so it's certainly being used. Some of these things that we're talking about now probably happened in the seventies on that argument when they built the track there and not doing it at the high school. Because when we were doing this, in order to get to town meeting, we looked through Dick Heidecker and all the information. There was a debate back then, the merits of that versus this. So what I'm concerned about if we don't do it now, in 20 years, I'm going to say, how could they have not done this when it was there? The economics, certainly you've got incredible bang for your buck with the donations and the in-kind services, second to none that I've seen in, in my profession on this. I would like to see more of community input on it, a little bit. I don't see football here, I'll be honest with you. The traffic management plan and the lockers and all that stuff, it'd be nice to have that as part of the presentation if it goes to town meeting. A lot of hard work went into this and not just from the turf stuff, from the school committee and from the finance department. And I went back for the, to the warrant article to get this in, back in warrant article number six. And we had the NFL grant, the fundraising, the soft up. That was about 420, throw in the scoreboard, it was about 450 of donations. But the school department revolving fund, the bond balance that was there, and kind of the creativeness of, you know, and the appropriateness of the overlaid surplus all went in to make it work. At no time did we say, we're not going to come back to the town, but we did master plan it so this day would come. And it seems like yesterday and it's been five years. I would like to see it go to town meeting for a number of reasons. I think it will get used. I don't think you're going to raise money to replace it just from the fees. I don't see many towns doing that. And when people ask me how long do turf fields last, it could be 20 years or it could be two years. We've put them in in Boston and it gets, you know, kids drive on it and they don't last. So Foxborough's done a great job maintaining it. I would like to see a little more effort from the sports groups to support this. When the turf stuff went up, it was a focus group. It was the, the only ambition they had was turf field because the, there's just, even if you go out now, there's no fields open. So they just needed a place to go. You could put another turf field and that still would get used. So the master plan effort does make it a community centerpiece that you could park at the IGO, you could park at the St. Mary's and the booth and this, and it could work. I think what bothers me a little bit is if you look at our budget last year, and this is, maybe it's a little personal, but I had asked for recognition that, you know, can we cut 500, one and a quarter percent? And everyone says, no, we can't do it. This year, not publicized very well, but we've got an extra million dollars coming in that we didn't expect. And this is a million dollars. So big picture, just because it comes in and we spend it, which is okay. That's, you know, it's up to the townspeople if they want to do. But I would like to see a little more effort from the sports groups that say, we want to contribute to this somehow. When that effort was over 400,000 last year and it's just lacking this year, it's, it's, it's a little, makes you want to look at what other groups, the seniors or whatever, could use that money. If they were asked, would they fundraise? I just don't see the school doing it. And yes, you can't make a million dollars overnight, but you can come up with 20,000 or 30,000. And I heard it at the AdCom meeting that, you know, either you donate it or it's a tax, it's the same thing. It's not the same thing. If you donate it, it's because you want to. If it's a tax, because you have to. So I'm looking at the people that will never use this because they don't have kids or they're seniors. It'd be just nice for the people that will use it to open up their pocketbooks a little bit. But I would like to see it go to the town meeting because ultimately it's, you know, those are the people that are going to vote for it.
Jay, piggybacking off of that, if I could a little bit, maybe even Randy talking about how this 1.2 million dollars would be financed, especially in light, the few phone calls I got, and certainly Representative Barrows knows, if you get a couple of phone calls, there's a heck of a lot more behind them, is with Burl School looming very largely over our head, coming to head soon, you know, couldn't that 1.2 million dollars be used to put aside for that rainy day for the Burl School? But my question is, what, where was the thought for where that 1.2 million dollars would come from?
Thank you for the question. So the funding for this project is free cash or our fund balance, 1,150,000. We're able to put that forward because of the year that we had last year in terms of overachieve on stadium payment, not last fiscal '17, overachieve on stadium payments, new growth taxes, the town is booming commercially, and local receipts, the major categories. So we had our best year ever in terms of free cash certification, 8.3 million. So that's why we're putting forward cash funding. We would never borrow for something of this, of this size, just on borrowing level. In terms of the Burl School, we've been highly focused on trying to, A, minimize the amount that ultimately we'll need to borrow. We've been salting away, as you know, funds into our capital stabilization account. Currently have approximately 1.1 million there today. And there's a warrant article for this year's uptown meeting to add another million dollars to that, to get us up to 2.1 million dollars. And we've identified other funding areas, overlay surplus, again, that we'll be looking to tap at the end of this year. So ultimately to bring forward close to, to buy down the amount that we might need to borrow between somewhere as a 3.3, 3.5 million dollars. So that the amount that we would end up borrowing, our goal, and right now it looks doable, is to actually borrow for this school renovation with included debt, meaning not asking for a debt exclusion, just like we did for the town hall. So we're, we're working hard to make sure we can shoehorn in the debt service associated with that project, you know, into the budget without asking the taxpayers for, you know, for increase. And the equivalent of being able to do that is the equivalent of saving the taxpayers another two and a half percent increase. Let increases by two and a half percent, around two and a half. If the Burl School debt service were to be a debt exclusion, that would effectively add another two and a half percent. So by our, doing that within the, within the levy, in essence, we're looking to, to not have that, that burden, extra burden for the taxpayers. I think your, your point, Doc, this has been, you know, through Randy's help and through the whole research thing, is it has been laid out in a way that we feel comfortable that we can achieve, you know, both the Burl and this. But again, I think it's, it's, as Jim said, I think it's interesting to see how the taxpayers basically will view this themselves. And if, you know, if they truly are behind it, and it would take all the organizations that Jim mentioned for the people to come out and say that they are, then, you know, we've been very transparent on the Burl project. The numbers have been out there, the, you know, the scope of the project, obviously the timing is a lot longer further out than we had hoped it would be, but that's just the process. So I don't think there's any surprises coming at anybody at this point. But, you know, it, it seems to me that this, you could, you can, you know, do a project like this, which would benefit the town for years to come. And the schools, obviously, we agree, would benefit us, you know, greatly. Or you could put it in a stabilization fund and do some other future project, you know, one way or the other. It's, it's which project is, you know, do you feel is the right place to go?
Can I, can I enter the chair? Was it, you presented this Wednesday to the advisory committee?
Yes.
Bob, just general, was it well received or was it more questions than answers?
Not a lot of questions, but I think, I will be honest with you, I think when Joe got up and spoke to some of the issues, and I'll be the first one to say, the issue on the trainer, I hadn't even thought of. I was thinking of every other issue that, you know, we deal with on a daily basis.
The issue on the what?
The trainer.
Oh, the trainer.
Not being available to them, the safety concerns that they have with that. And, you know, you could see it, obviously, if a child got hurt and needed immediate icing and stuff like that, well, you know, that's.
Coincidentally, I did talk to, I saw Amy out at the turf field the other day and she kind of mimicked the same thing. She can't be in two places at once.
And, and you've seen, we run multiple events on a, on a single day. It could be a softball field going, baseball field in the back, it might be something else, you know, tennis, you know, playing, whatever. So she's running in 16 directions, but at least she's at the site, which makes it, you know, a doable thing that she can get to. Someone calls her and says, we need you over at the tennis court, she can be there. So you can't do that two miles away, but.
So it was pretty well received or the advisory?
I, I think it was. I, they didn't vote. They're not going to vote until next week on it. But I, I think a few people who said that they were against it after Joe spoke said that they, he changed their mind on their thinking. But I don't know how to read a lot of people when they're sitting there, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? There's no action that we need to take, right?
No, and when we get to the point where you go through the warrant, you'll make your recommendations.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ten past eight. Motion to reopen town warrant to add article for sewer for Burl School project.
I don't want to say get away too quickly. So just by way of introduction of this issue, the.
Should I move it first?
Yes, please.
Okay. Move to reopen the town warrant to add article for sewer for Burl School project.
Second.
Need a second for discussion?
So. So just for discussion purposes and to information on the board, this is a situation where the Burl School project had moved, has moved right along in terms of design. And the termination was made that they, they thought it would best be, instead of rebuilding the existing septic system, it was better to go with the, with a sewer, to connect to the sewer system, which is doable based upon input from our, from our water sewer department. Upon further review, however, it was later determined that, that the, that the Burl School itself School itself is not in the sewer district, to be, is not included in the sewer district. So as such, they have, Bill came to me and said, you know, it'd be nice if we could do that this year, this, at this town meeting because they're working on the final design plans and they'd like to come to the town meeting in the fall with, with, with a request to, for appropriation for the project. So, and, and all, not only that, but they also need to meet the requirements of the MSBA in terms of providing their information to them and indicate that the sound is supportive of the various pieces of that. And this is an important piece of that project to, to be included. So I have inquired a town meet, a town, town council whether this is appropriate to do that. It's your warrant, you have the ability to reopen the warrant and, and obviously it would be just for this article and then, then reclose it. And so then would then be, then that, that would be submitted to, to the AdCon for consideration as well. Okay?
So the motion's been made, it's been seconded, still under discussion. Any questions from the board relative to this action?
Is this relative to reopening the warrant?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I have a question.
No, I'm fine, I'm reopening, but I have questions.
All those in favor of reopening? Thank you.
Okay, so I'll start by apologizing. I, I started the process with the sewer thing probably six months ago, trying to get clearer information as to what we would need to do. As you know, at the last town meeting, we bought back from the Cannon Forge a significant volume of sewage that runs through the pipes that go down Moore Street. The current cost, you know, to us would be about forty-two dollars a gallon per day. And that is slated to go up into the low fifties. And so obviously buying today would save us some money from down the road. It's, it's something that would be important. The MSBA really wants the, the sewer, septic, whatever you wanna call it, resolved and worked out because it's a big stumbling block, you know, as far as their whole process and going through this. Because they don't want you coming in with a great design only to find out that your septic system, you know, is not up to the, the current code and you'd have to rebuild it. And can you rebuild it on your site the way you need to? So the sewer is obviously the, the, the most practical way to go here. We have three buildings, well, actually the town right now, if you, if you look at our process, we've been very, you know, successful in getting most of our buildings on sewer. So the only, the only school that would be left off a sewer if we were capable of doing this would be the Taylor. But the IGO, the, the high school, middle school are all on sewer today. This building is on sewer, library's on sewer, council on aging's on sewer. So the only other large one, obviously, is the joint public safety. So I think it's in the town's best interest to have its major facilities on the sewer line for long-term, you know, use and, and the lack of, you know, potential problems with those. It also is because in our design, we are required to basically bring whatever additional piping and flows we have into, you know, wherever we're going. So the current pipes that are in the building, we will be reusing, but we need to make, you know, add some additional larger ones and they've gotta go somewhere. So if I don't know where, what direction we're going, obviously I'm, I'm hamstringing my engineers in which to actually design this plan and, and complete this and figure out our true costs on getting there. So when I originally asked, you know, it was basically a matter of going to the sewer commissioners and asking for the, the flow, number one, and, and negotiating the price and paying for it, which I had no problem with doing and I, and I did that. And it was at that meeting just recently that they said that they weren't sure if we were in the sewer district or not, but if we weren't, it was a simple article. Well, the problem was obviously the warrant. I'd have gotten the first part of my warrant out there with the, with the CIP request to pay for it, but now I needed another article to basically say, you know, include it in the district. And, and the article we, the town has passed on, on multiple sites, some for residential people, you know, if they had an issue within their own sites. So it's not a, it's, it's, you know, it's a boilerplate article and it just basically says that the flow will go. Our current calculations are that we use about nineteen hundred gallons per day during the times that we're open. And obviously the improvement of the, the building itself, like any of the buildings we do, all go to low-flow fixtures and, and water usage. So that should actually come down, but what we're requesting is to buy the nineteen hundred gallons today. Potentially, we would swing some of it. If we have excess in the, in the future, we could swing that to the high school from concession stand side of things, so, you know, or if we don't use it, if we just sell it back to the, the water sewer district. So it's, but at least we're preserving the rate today. We're locking it in. I can guarantee the engineers on how we're moving forward with the, the plan. And, you know, no matter what happens with the Burl project long-term, having it on sewer is the right thing, I think, for the community to do.
So the, the sewer line runs down Moore Street, but the school itself is not part of the district?
No.
So how does that happen?
The district out there is kinda spotty. It's, in the Cannon Forge area was the, the preliminary or the, the, the major district that was developed, you know, for the sewer line. But if you actually look at it, you'll find little spots of, of areas, again, some that were residential, that, that had failed systems, that needed to be connected and stuff like that. We have, you know, the downtown obviously has a, a critical needs district, which has been developed and, and, and put in place. But, you know, the community does have the right through warrant articles to basically include in the sewer district any area or parcel it wishes to do.
So to connect the Burl School, if it goes through to the district, it's basically just the pipes there, just?
Right.
So are any of those houses on Moore Street in this district?
Not in the immediate area of the Burl itself.
So.
In other words, the district is strictly gonna be the Burl School. That, you know.
How, how's the neighborhood gonna take that if they have?
They have the same right if they have a failed system or stuff to come forward to the sewer commissioners and do the same thing.
And apply for a, a one-off tie-in?
Right. Absolutely. That's the way it's done. I mean, just because we aren't a fully sewered town, I mean, you have to do it, you know, piece by piece.
That's the process.
Really? Individually?
Actually, we have a warrant to go for a house that wants to.
Okay. All right.
So, to the chair. Yep. So the, the cost of, of buying the flow is, you say forty to fifty dollars?
Forty-two, forty-two dollars a gallon, which is what Chris calculated based on our average water flow for the last three years.
So that, if you do the math, the ninety, it's about eighty, eighty-five thousand a, a one-time payment?
Right.
So the Burl School has a septic, does the Burl School has a septic system right now? Is it, is it failed or has it been tested?
No, we, we maintain it. We, we, you know, pump it every year and, and have it, you know, checked and stuff like that. But you will notice that it's actually underneath one of the playgrounds and then partially into the field of the other. It's in the down gradient going towards the wetlands and actually borders right, right on the wetlands. So, you know, they, again, our ability to, if we had to, to rebuild it in the future, there's not a lot of overflow area in which to go. So I'm not sure how well that would go. I guess it would depend on perks and, and things of that nature.
So that would just be decommissioned, you tie the pipe in, pay the, pay that one time?
Right.
And then?
And then we would pay obviously sewer.
Pay the water bill, the sewer bill.
Right.
So the, the calculations you've done to date for costs and building costs and stuff, did it take into account a rebuilt septic system or a connection to sewer?
No, because, again, on the MSBA's process, they will not participate in sewer fees at all, or, or septic systems. They believe that's outside of the, the cost of the project. They, they do similar things with their outside work on projects, they limit the value they'll put into it. But that's why this is kinda critical, that we get this figured out upfront before we go into the process. If we were to go into a total rebuild and rip out the entire system, we could get a portion of it, but the, the, again, now the reality is, was that the best move for the town for the long-term? And, and I would have to say, if anybody can go on sewer, you, you really want to go on sewer, especially with a facility that has, that's of this size.
In the figures that we're looking, putting in at the nineteen hundred gallons, does that have any effect on the other businesses that are waiting or paying or, is it, it's been a while since I looked at it back when we were doing the Fisher Street and the numbers, but there's plenty of excess capacity that this isn't gonna short-circuit anyone else that's trying to get it?
It should because of the Cannon Forge, that's additional that we haven't really counted, about seven two thousand gallons. So that's really given us.
That Cannon Forge has?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of at the last meeting. My impression from the water and sewer meeting that I had with them is that they, they were not concerned about the nineteen hundred gallons at all. They, they just brought up the fact that I may need to create a district for it, other than that.
Thank you.
Yeah, last I knew, they were aching to sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, they have capacity, they need to, they need to sell flow.
Flow is good.
And I actually believe that, you know, this actually is a cash positive for them because at town meeting, we bought it for probably half of what we're talking about I have to pay to buy.
Less, we did like less than five dollars.
All right, so a tenth of it. I don't feel too ripped off.
Just had to ask.
Just, Bill Keen, just out of curiosity, do you think Roger could let us know how much flow they have sold and, you know?
They've actually, they've done actually very well.
Right, I think with Fisher Street.
It'd be nice to kinda update the board on that, that's fine, I can do that.
Yeah, that would be good. Good move.
So, Bill, should we close?
Yeah, the, I would ask that you've, you've opened the, the warrant, so now the question is, does the board wanna include this article in the warrant? So that would be your next action, and then I would move to close the warrant. So two actions.
So, uh, move to approve?
Move to include.
Move to include this article?
Yes.
In the warrant?
Second.
What's made, second, any further discussion? See none, all is in favor?
Right.
And a motion to close the warrant?
No, move to close the warrant.
Second.
What's made, second, any further discussion? See none, all is in favor?
Thank you.
One little behind. Discussion possible action, town warrant articles and proposed FY nineteen budget.
So chairman, and, and though the fact there's a number of items here, would you like to take the, the eight-ten, eight-twenty item out of order? That's, because then folks are, folks are waiting, so.
I'm getting, I'm getting nods from the audience, I'm gonna do that.
So it might be, might be good to kinda do that.
Child sexual abuse awareness committee, discussion possible action, draft policy to establish mandatory training for child sexual abuse awareness.
So chairman, just for sake of clarification, Jamie Kenny, who was the attorney who actually wrote, helped write this document for you, unfortunately, he's not able to attend due to a family illness. And so Jack Dolan is, was available tonight, so he's here to, and he normally is, Jack is the person that does review these articles, or these, these, these policies before they get submitted for final approval. So Jack would have been here normally under the circumstance, but he wasn't available last time, so Jamie substituted him, so he's gonna substitute for Jamie tonight, so.
Well, for the record, Jamie did a great job.
I'm glad to hear that.
Good time, Mike.
Go ahead, you wanna? So before the, the board tonight is, is a, is a brand-new policy that is, that was worked on actually last week with, with a group, a working group of individuals made up of members of this, of this committee, the, myself, the Labor Council, Mary Beth, and, and the chairman of the board, Mr., Mr. Feldman. So, and, and, and members of personnel board, Gary Whitehouse. So, so, so we, we tried to get everybody together into one room and sorta hash this out and actually it came, it came pretty, pretty easily with everybody working in the same room, so I thought it was a good process and we got it done fairly quickly. So the, the document itself says, let's wait for it to come up here, sorry about that. Paper is best, it's faster than, than documents. So the, the policy reads as such, "The town of Foxborough policy on child sexual abuse awareness training. Definitions: Town employee shall be defined in this policy as any person performing services for or holding in office position, employment or membership in the town department or agency whether by election, appointment, contract, hire or engagement, whether serving with or without compensation on a full, regular, part-time, intermittent or consultant basis. Training shall be defined pursuant to this policy as an online or in-person training program recommended by the town of Foxborough's Child Safety Committee as sexual abuse awareness training. applicability: This policy shall apply to all town employees as defined above. Policy: It is the policy of the town of Foxborough, parentheses, the town, that all town employees complete, complete child sexual abuse, abuse awareness training. Initial training shall be completed within ninety days of, of appointment. Retraining shall be completed every two years thereafter. Training is mandatory. However, in, in exigent circumstances, the town manager may excuse an employee for training at his or her, her, his or her sole discretion. Disciplinary action: Employees who fail to complete the training under this policy may be subject to disciplinary action up to including termination." So the policy, so what is, the action that was being proposed is that the board would, would hear this policy, it would then go to, actually, would then go back to the, the personnel board for further consideration, and then we would then take that pro, policy that was approved and then impact bargain it with, with any of the unions that we had to impact bargain with. So that was the process that was laid out. This is the first approval process, if you will, that's being proposed tonight. I'm certainly open to any further comments anybody wants to share relative to the process.
One comment. You, you read a policy, the first policy as written, you did make the change of the title of the committee?
I actually did. This is not the, I actually sent the, the new, this may not be the one that.
You just read the wrong one.
He's read the wrong one.
I apologize. Yeah, so the one I had was, I apologize, I actually sent an, an updated version of that, so.
You read the wrong one.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the one I have in here was the wrong one. It's a, the top proper title is the Town of Foxborough Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. And I, I actually put in parentheses, the FCA, FCSAAC.
You have copies of the correct one.
There you go, great, okay. So I apologize for that.
No problem.
I got the wrong, I got the wrong one.
I think the copy was out.
There you go. So, yeah, the, I do, you do have the right, the right one in your hands, so thank you.
So, first of all, I wanna thank everybody for the patience. This has been a long time overdue, but we're here now. We're gonna look to the committee to stay fully engaged and to work with the town to make sure that this policy continues in perpetuity. No, no words can, as a parent, no words can describe that training. I think every parent who has a child should take the training. No question about it. I know when I took the training, it was, it was eye-opening. So all I can say is, sorry it took so long, but here we are. Keep up the good work. Any questions from the board? No? Comments?
Just, just a comment, it's, I echo chairman sentiment. Thank you for your, your, your work on it and please stay involved if you can, I know you're in the transition of, of, of moving off, but a ton of work and, you know, nineteen eighty-three, the National Abuse, National Child Abuse Prevention Month was started, so it's fitting that April is this month and it's taken us a while to get here. But rather than reading it and understanding the legalese, this does take a couple more steps. We've gotta get it through the labor board, we've gotta get it negotiated with the unions. So if anyone's watching at home, what's, what's behind this is, and if I'm repetitive, I'm sorry, but in the, in the sixties, seventies and eighties, Bill Sheehan molested a ton of boys. He, he worked for the town and it went unnoticed. This means that every employee in town, part-time, full-time, as a contractor, has to take the training, period. If we get pushed back on the, from the unions and pushed back from the labor that we have, then we just gotta push harder. This is the first town that has done this and you guys should be proud because it's taken years to get to this point. It's like pushing molasses uphill. And Jay Barrows, thank you, your work, it's still stuck at a higher level at the senate and the house. It was well-received, but it's stagnant right now. So, you know, it's, it's a one-page piece of paper, but the work that went into this for you guys and, and what's gonna happen once this becomes policy and everyone's trained, you are gonna have to train a hundred people on this overnight. It's, it's.
That's fine.
Yeah, and you worked with the churches and you worked with the different groups, but thank you. but thank you for bringing the reports to us every year, you're mandated to do it, but hopefully it stays strong, and I'm hoping within, within next year, it's already starting to get rule of thumb for people, for coaches and stuff, so it's, we're getting there, but I just wanted to, people understand it at home, it's not just a piece of paper, there's a couple more steps with the town to get it where it needs to get, so, thank you.
I have a question on the actual policy part, so the document that we have, under, where it says "Policy," the second paragraph, last sentence, why can the town manager basically excuse somebody from this training?
We talked about it at the committee level, there are situations, believe it or not, where, it's not believe it or not, there were situations where people have been personally impacted by the situation, by the very issue that they're being trained by. And so therefore, that would be considered exigent circumstances, in which we would consider that as whether or not the person really wanted to be exposed to that level of training, because it could actually may bring back some very negative connotations to it.
So you guys all discussed it?
And everything was fine with them.
I just, it caught me off-guard, you know, like...
First, the number, you know, ninety-nine percent of people will still get trained, but occasionally we do hear that comment, so we have to include four in here.
So that would be basically the only way that you would be...
That I, that I know of, and there may be other exigent circumstances I haven't considered or I haven't thought of, but, but it's pretty, it's pretty rare.
There may be somebody that you hired that's had very similar training that we've already vetted, other types of training churches do that may have already come with some training that's similar, and they may want to say that satisfies this requirement.
Right, but that person, every two years, would have to get retrained?
Right.
Does anybody?
Just, you know, two thousand and twelve till now, so, we've got it, so that all the youth groups understand that in order to be on the fields with our children, they need to take this course, and they need to re-up every two years, and they're doing well with it, so, we didn't need a policy for that, but it's part of the lease agreement when they go to use the fields. So, hopefully, the unions in town will understand how important this is to the community, and if they need a quick history lesson, they can call any one of us.
I think it's important to show that all, everybody's taking the training, currently employed, pretty much, and there hasn't been any pushback from unions, from anything, because, first of all, we're doing it on town time, so nobody's working off time to do it. And it's something, if, even if they don't have direct contact with kids every day, they can use it in their home life. So it's not, you know, like I say, there's been no pushback, and I can't imagine that being any pushback, because it just doesn't make sense.
So, so I would, I would ask that the board vote to adopt this measure, this policy, and then send it forward to the, in draft form, and send it to the, to the personnel board, as well as the, and then, and then we would start the process of negotiating it as well. And I have to stress the word "draft," because there may be things that come out of the negotiations that folks here haven't considered that, and I have to bring that back, because on all intents and purposes, we still have to remain open-minded to the, to the discussion.
You said they have to go before the unions now?
Yes, it's impact bargain.
Is this policy, is it in place now?
It is.
Or do we have to wait until all the unions, everybody is...
Well, we've been, we've been, we've been training as many people as possible, so we haven't stopped that process, but there, but there's nothing here that sort of requires it, if you will, everybody here has more or less voluntarily done it, so we've had a lot of volunteers.
The majority of all the departments that we've effectively had on the train.
To answer your question, the practice is already in place, yes, the practice is already in place, this really helps us when, you know, you hire someone new, this goes in the onboarding packet now, so that it's just one of the policies that they do.
And it puts some meat behind our intentions.
Correct.
And I think, you know, like Bob was saying, that you don't know, you never know when you're going to need this information, but we sort of made a tacit promise that we would have, we would maximize the number of eyes and ears in this community on young children. You could be in the inspector's office, you could be in the DPDW, you could be somewhere where you see something, and without the training, you might not recognize that this is a concern, and that's what, you know, Dave calls it an eye-opener, it really is, but it provides the majority of people who work in Foxborough with the ability to understand when something means something and when it doesn't, and what the signs are, and it'll just help us all keep all those eyes and ears on kids.
And I think the second part of that is, if you can recognize it, it gives you a path of what do you do, who do you, who do you talk to, how do you, how do you approach it?
And the confidence to act.
Yeah, a lot of people might see something and they, they don't know what to do.
I think everybody's had that moment where you say, hmm, that, where it could be, it could be about other types of abuse, or you're a grocery store, but this training really does give you the confidence to act. So I think that's, that's really what's most important, if we're going to be serious about protecting children.
And those cards that you give out are very powerful. Those cards you give out?
Yes, yeah.
They're very powerful, I mean, it's right there. Whoever designed those did a good job.
That would be Linda.
So that's the, the action before the board, if you will, Mr. Chairman.
I'd move to adopt a draft policy on child sexual abuse awareness training.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? See none, all is in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to the committee, sorry, all right, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Want to do the firefighter contract?
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Representative.
We're going to jump around a little bit, we're going to do the firefighter contract. Okay.
Yeah, so the, you're going to do the fire contract, that this one, yeah, so, motion to approve the, is requested by the board to approve the fire contract that's been proposed, it is a two percent increase over FY seventeen and eighteen, it also includes a three-hundred-dollar increase in the, in emergency...
Paramedics.
Paramedics, paramedic stipend, EMT stipend, paramedic stipend, rather, and for each of the years, so that is the only impact on these changes at all. We have, we have a cost impact that we provided for you as well, so that is the action before the board.
Move to approve firefighter contract.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? See none, all is in favor?
So that will be in your packet assigned.
All right, and then, that leaves us with the, with the budget and the warrant, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion possible action town warrant articles and propose FY nineteen budget.
So you have before you tonight, this is the latest version of the warrant itself, so we, hold on a second here. It also, in the budget, it also includes the budget, the recommendation of the budget as well, so, let's see. So I, I'm open to how the board wants to proceed relative to the articles.
Well, I think the last meeting, we went through article by article, with the exception of, of the budget.
Does the board have any questions relative to the, to the warrant or the budget at this time?
Not speaking on behalf of the board, but for me, do we know of anything that's, that's probably going to come off?
Yes, the item relative to number nineteen, which is the Pratt School, that item will come off likely, because it's not ready, not ready to be added at this time.
Is there any other warrant articles that are in jeopardy of not being ready?
Most likely, the library contract will be out, because we haven't even begun negotiating. I talked to them today, and they had a number of snowstorms for their union meeting, so they...
They're just not, they're not ready.
I talked to the union president, they're comfortable with that cone will fall item. We'll continue to, you know, we'll begin negotiations, but we won't make it on the fire, on the library contract. Trying to find you the warrant article number, it's moved.
Then we're going to amend the sewer service area map to include the borough school.
Yes, and that's, that was retreated as Article XX on your list. So we just, so likely what will happen is that we replace the Pratt School number with that one, so that'll be the new number nineteen effectively.
Why is the Harkes and Pedlers highlighted?
That is, that's, that's ready to go, still, it's still ready to go, the, I don't know why it was highlighted, quite honestly. There's no particular reason from our end, I don't know why it was, was still highlighted.
Those were my questions relative to the warrant articles, I don't know if members of the board have any other questions relative to the articles, with the exception of the budget.
What's the AdCom's schedule, they all...
They've been working right, right through the articles so far, they've actually already acted on some of the articles, and they're proceeding through there, and so Randy, you want to just speak to that?
Sure, they're looking to complete their voting by, I believe it's April twenty-fifth, that's Wednesday, they're actually adding in additional meeting that week as well, in order to accommodate participation for planning articles, make sure that all parties are available over an AdCom and planning, so they are moving very efficiently through hearing the articles and voting the articles, so they should be completed by the twenty-fifth.
Ideally, what would the board need to act on their articles?
In order for the, to lead the publishing timelines and post about the council, they want to sign along by the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, which will be your next meeting.
So we don't have to vote to call to close this tonight, or do we?
We have to close it.
I mean, not close it, but to keep everything or remove things?
No, we can do that, we'll, we'll remove stuff and add, add stuff on the last meeting, right?
You can, you can take your positions on it effectively at the seventeenth, if you so choose, if you want to do some of it now, you can do that too, entirely up to you.
You think we'll have a final draft by the seventeenth?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close now, actually, quite honestly.
We'll only wait till the seventeenth.
Yeah.
We can present you the final spreadsheet, along with the language.
All right.
Some people from the AdCom, they have any questions from us, or to help their process? Yeah, members of AdCom that are here, any questions for us?
I'm here as a private citizen, I...
Private citizen, I, you know.
I'm good.
Just asking.
The representative was here, I just, because he wanted to just at least update you relative to the land, the state land piece, we met this past week, actually yesterday, with folks from, from the state, from the Department of Agriculture, as well as Department of D.CAM, right?
So we've been at your, the meeting that we had yesterday.
Representative, sorry, sorry about that.
State your name, please.
Jay Barrows, thank you. So, I guess it was yesterday.
It was yesterday, believe it or not, yeah.
Yesterday we met with the D.CAM, who was in charge of state assets, and the Department of Agriculture representative, the land that's in question on Route one forty is under the control of the agriculture folks, but with our meeting, it was agreed that we could do an exchange. So if we're able to come up with an equivalent value of open space that would be dedicated to remaining that way, we could do a swap. So that's kind of where we're at right now, trying to get some clarification from them as to the next steps, how to evaluate what the, what the land is worth. I think it's realistically looked at as agricultural land in a certain area, it's not going to be valued at commercial, because it has to remain that. So it's not like you're buying an area where you could put a strip mall up that's worth X with thirty thousand cars a day going by, this is just, it's a patch of two-point-one acres of agricultural land, so if we can replicate that somewhere else. So we're, we're doing that, this is the first step in that process. So if the town meeting is successful in supporting the effort, then we take it to the next step with evaluating what it is.
So one of the questions had come up repeatedly was the fact that there was a change, exchange of value, or in other words, would the town have to pay for this land? The answer is no, we would exchange existing open space, which you're required to do anyways, if you take land out of open space purposes, you're required to replace it. So we would do that with existing land in town, identify those parcels, the town owns several parcels that are currently in open states, space, but we would have to identify that and exchange for that process. So the first step in the process, though, believe it or not, is actually to take the action that's before you, and that would be to approve the, the action, it would then go to the legislature, the legislature would then approve it, and then the, then the process of identifying the parcels would then go back, back and forth with the town, the town would then take another action at a town meeting to, to, more or less, exchange those parcels for this parcel. And so there's actually two town meeting actions, is this one just to enter into the process, go to the legislature, then, and then we go back to town meeting to actually exchange parcels, and then, and then there's an agreement to how the land's going to be used, that type of thing. And they, basically, the, the issue was, is, they, they understand this is going to be used potentially for public safety purposes, they recognize that if it were, we all recognize that if it was changed, used for something else, we'd have to go back to the legislature to, to change that purpose if we needed to do that, but, but the discussion so far has been just to strictly use that for potential uses, as a, as a public, public safety use.
So it's, it's the same process as the auditorium?
Essentially, yes.
It's, it's four or five steps before you get there, but I guess the good news is nobody said no.
Yeah, exactly.
The folks we sat with yesterday could have as easily said, no, we're not going to, you know, take away any agricultural land, so, you know, I think it was well-laid out what our message was to them, and they were acceptable to it. So I feel confident that we'll be able to, you know, take it to the next step and move forward, and it should work out to the advantage of the community. That's the hope.
The Chair, just, the first step is to get the land in this process, but there's a lot of people that remember, you know, when the fire station was built, and we talked a little bit about this before, but the fact that we're looking at a second substation, or I don't know the terminology, at what point did the town say we need it, or did we do a study that says our call times would be better, or the traffic is worse? Is this just people asking because it's free land, or has we, we've done a study? Because I don't, it just appeared at one point.
Understood, yep. So I'll let the fire chief speak to that.
Thanks for asking that question. You asked me that question in two thousand and nine, when I was coming in front of you as your fire chief, so.
I asked you.
That same exact question. You're on the AdCom, so, you know, the thing is, is it's a great question, and I think it absolutely needs to be told to the, to the public and to all our residents. We're not looking to build a substation today, tomorrow, I've been telling for ten years that we've got to keep our eyes in, on the numbers. Our response times have already started to show the increase because of the growth that we have in the one forty, one oh six, that Green Street, looking at our response times towards Cedar, end of South Street, we, we have those numbers, we can bring out that data any time, but we need to make it clear to the, to everybody, we're not looking to build a substation today. What we're doing is we're planning, being proactive, and trying to put the building blocks in place with the help of our representative, and, and trying to find those locations that would be best suited at the time that we're ready. I'm not saying we're ready today, but if we are able to, be able to swap a piece of land that is going to be kept as free, open space for a viable spot that could be a potential location for a future station, and not cost to taxpayers, I think that's a home run with baseball around the corner. So, I just really, I'm happy you asked that question, because we need to make sure that everybody realizes, we're not looking to build a substation today or tomorrow, that's not what this is about, it's just trying to plan for the future.
Chief Hatfield, is that the best location for a substation, or is that the only space that's available?
Right now, if you were to start to look at, if I had to build it today, I would be looking at the aspects of our response times, our call volume, and we have really limited... limited locations in that area for us as a town. Um, if that was the decision that we were going to look at today. You know, we've had lots of discussions with AdCom and my liaisons about what about east, eastern part of, of the town, East Street and that area. Also has some of the same situations. Long response times. We don't have the call volume as much, but we still have those response times that we have to be considered and concerned about at all times. I've been bringing that up and looking at that. But we have to pick the right time to do the right project when the community can afford it. And with the growth that we have out in that 140 area and all of that, and with the future growth of, of that potential, uh, you know, senior housing project, we have to look at that for the future. This is a great spot because of the location, uh, and it doesn't have a lot of turns. It doesn't have a, a lot of, um, of issues surrounding that spot. It gets us straight shots to major arteries. It gets us straight shots to the highway where our, we've had an increase of car accidents on ninety-five and on four ninety-five. It's a very good location if we could ever get it to be dedicated for that future use. Now, we've had discussions if, what if at the time we found a better location that we as a community want to build that substation at? We have to turn the land back over to the state, or ask the state to reallocate it for another town Foxborough project. So we're not, we're not locked like we have to build the station there, and we have to build it now. There's no time window. It's just committing a beautiful piece of par- property for, that would meet our needs for the future.
And didn't we, um, fund a study, a public safety study? Has that begun yet, or is that?
The RFP is pretty close to getting done. We're just waiting for a few pieces on the PD side.
And then we recently obviously finished the Route 140 corridor study. And again, the traffic counts are certainly higher. Um, you know, when, when the chief and I spoke originally about this, when you look at the reach that Foxborough is responsible for along the four ninety-five corridor, it's, it's good haul. And, um, you know, Mansfield has now moved but a mile or so, a little bit further, uh, out onto 106. A lot of mutual aid exists. We're going to have regional dispatch. We're going to have somebody sitting across from another, you know, I think we're going to be able to react quicker and, and more efficiently with the use of everybody's help. But, um, this is a long process. These things, I guess I always say that when I, when I talk about the legislature. I'm proven in fact that it takes forever to get anything done. But it, it is a long process. And so just by us starting this, and the fact that we've got, um, an agreeable administration to do it, um, I think we should pursue it. Again, it's up to the, the pleasure of the board and, and the, the pleasure of the town meeting folks. But again, I, I don't see it really costing us anything other than appraisals, which are probably a year or so down the road for that to happen. Um, but we've got folks here that are looking at, and certainly more than capable of determining, again, dirt for dirt, if you will, to remain as open space.
So in the short answer to all of that is that this is strictly strategic planning. That's all it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Am I good?
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Dismissed, sir.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Representative. Good to see you. Thank you.
All right.
Nice to see you today.
Budget.
How would you like to proceed?
Want to throw it? Go quick.
Okay.
You can actually go for the budget.
Go quick. So, um, as far as the, the general fund budget goes, based on the, um, the town manager's recommendation, which is also accepted by the advisory committee as well, um, we are balanced initially by about four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to the positive. But unfortunately, with the snow and ice season that we've had, um, we'll probably need, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars to go towards our snow and ice this year. So the, the deduct off of next year's taxes, which is our contingency, uh, we had planned three hundred thousand. Right now, we stand at about three seventy-eight. So I'm expecting that to come in close to four hundred thousand. But in essence, still balanced, um, by, uh, over three hundred thousand dollars, and all without the need to, to use free cash to balance the budget, which is a first for the community. Um, and it's, uh, based on, on that dynamic that, um, we will be positioned to, assuming the townspeople vote for the, for the borough school project and the, the bond authorization for that, we will be in very good shape to absorb the debt service for that project, which would be approximately one point one, one point two million dollars within the, within the levy limit. Because that's, uh, right around what we would normally use from free cash to go towards, uh, towards the operating budget. So we've, we've, the, the room is there, uh, within, within our recurring revenue. And, um, that's the, you know, that's the proposed use for that, is to, um, take that burden off the taxpayers. Um, as far as, uh, our, our assumptions to, to support this right now, unfortunately, all we have is the governor's budget for state aid. Um, and, uh, in essence, the, the numbers are, are flat. They're actually slightly lower than they were last year net-net. Um, but, you know, we've become accustomed to that. So what's helping us to sustain, um, the recurring revenue that we need to sustain the services is the growth in our, our tax base. Um, so our new growth taxes, um, you know, continue to perform well, uh, as well as our, our local receipts. Um, and I have to also give credit to the ambulance receipts as well, uh, because they contribute not only a significant portion, uh, or one hundred percent of all of the capital needs that the fire department needs, but it also contributes close to a million dollars towards the operating budget annually as well. So I guess you could say at, at this moment, in time, we're firing on, on all cylinders and, uh, able to sustain the, um, the recommended budget by, by the town manager.
Questions from the board?
You?
Yes?
No.
Jenny?
No.
Oh, please say it.
I spoke enough now. I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Randy? Next, uh...
So we're gonna, we've decided we're gonna wait until the seventeenth, and we're gonna...
Go through all those items, including the capital, the capital process, everything. Okay. Paying the law. So that'll be strictly a financial meeting. Um, other items that we have for that day at this point, Amanda, do you know offhand? What's that agenda looking like?
National Grid.
National Grid is coming in.
Postphone, Jim Scorpion bar.
No, it's getting a Foxborough day. Okay. I won't, I won't leave. So.
Firefighters swearing in.
Firefighters swearing in. Um, we need to make sure we have somebody for cleanup Foxborough day on that. All right. Okay, so we don't, we don't forget?
We'll also be doing the DPW contract in open session if it goes well and exact decisions.
I just want to make sure we have enough time for...
I think collectively, it'll be, it'll, it may run a little bit long, but we should be okay.
Okay.
All right.
You jumped all over the place tonight. We got us, we got all those items, right?
Yep, Selectman's update.
Okay. Selectman's update, I mentioned earlier when Jared was here about the...
Say everyone.
Foxborough Cultural Council grant recipient ceremony that was, um, pretty cool, actually. Um, good time. Still trying to figure out the, the performance. A little weird, but it was, it was pretty good.
That's right.
Yeah. It was pretty good. Those, those kids do a great job. And like I said, the cultural council does, does a great job. Um, I'll, I'll say it again. No, no committee in town does more with less. So, um, kudos to them. So, you know, open up to the board.
I went last week to the regional transportation meeting at Stadium. Bill and Mary Beth were there. Paige presented. She did a great job presenting. A lot of exciting opportunities in the next two, three, four, five, ten years.
Yeah.
In this whole area with regional transportation. It was a full house. It was...
It was, yeah.
Eighty or ninety people there from, from across our whole region. So, um, just a good job by Paige.
Stole my, stole a little of my thunder on that one, so.
Sorry.
No, it was a good, it was a good meeting. It was, and, um, it was very informative because, and timely because it's interesting, because if I look back four years ago, we had that, we hosted that same meeting there, and I think I was on the job like, like about two weeks. And it's interesting how we've evolved even since that period of time. And ideas that you had, I think you had suggested, Jenny, were talked about, and actually starting to come to fruition relative to trying to put together, um, uh, local bus services that will help connect the dots, if you will, from between, between transportation modes that we're trying to put in place. And, um, and the real need to, um, have a coalition, if you will, of, of everybody sort of participating into that process so that ultimately we're able to get the best opportunities and best options for our, for our residents and for our businesses, which is critical to getting people around. So I think, I think that was a, it was a great meeting, and, and I'm happy that, you know, our town planning director was sort of the leading, leading person in putting that, helping, helping pull that together. So it was great to, uh, it was a real tribute to her to do such a good job. Just another, um, uh, thing that I wanted to bring to the board's attention is that today, earlier today, we, um, we were with Representative Barrows and Senator, Senator Feeney up at, at the State House testifying on the, the local bill that this town actually supported at the, uh, at annual, at the, at the last town meeting in the fall to put together a, 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 a funding request for, under the charter schools, the, the school amendment, which would effectively allow us to get paid a hundred percent of the, uh, funding that's due to the town of Foxborough. Um, we're very pleased to report that we were actually asked to present on, on a bill like that, which I didn't quite think we would, but to be quite honest with you, because it's a big, it's a big lift in terms of getting funding for that particular issue. Um, so we were able to demonstrate today to the, to the Committee on Education that, um, not only is it impactful to the town of Foxborough, but it's, it's significantly impact, impactful across the Commonwealth. And that clearly this is, while no one here, um, takes issue with the, the concept of charter schools, the funding mechanism truly is, is, um, is not set in the right direction and needs to be looked at seriously. Because what it's doing effectively is draining off resources from the, the public education system, which in Foxborough is, is something that we're all very, very proud of, and one which we want to continue to put, to, to develop over time. But if you look at during the past eighteen years or so, when this, this one particular issue has been measured against our growth in state aid, we're actually, the, the growth in the, in the, in the charter school funding has gone from, uh, has, has actually outpaced our, our growth in state aid by a hundred and nine percent. So effectively, we've, we've received about twenty-three million dollars in, in, uh, growth in, in, in Chapter Seventy-Eight, but yet, but yet we've been charged almost twenty-four million dollars in, in terms of charter school assessments. So what's happened effectively is that we've gotten no, no, no additional help. And actually, it's drained some of our help by going to, into, into our local school system. So what's happened is, is effectively, the, the local community is actually supporting the growth in our education program, yet, and the remainder of that money is going back to, is going back to the charter school. Again, not an issue about the school itself, but more about the funding mechanism. And that, and this is really something that, uh, we hope that the, the Commonwealth will take a hard look at. It's interesting to point out, though, that the committee today said that, that Massachusetts actually is one of the biggest supporters of, of funding for charter schools in, anywhere in the country, which, which is a little disturbing because in many ways, what's happening is that, is that all that funding is, is coming from, from this, and the, from this overall education expense going into that program. But yet, uh, it's, it's, it's also happening across the country in the same direction, but only we're doing more of it. So we're putting a lot of money in that direction, where in fact, there are a lot of communities and a lot of cities that are really hurting because of the, because the drain of, of funding against the public education programs. So that's something that we, we were able to convey to the committee today. Don't know where it'll go from here, but, but at least we got hurt. And that's something that, uh, is a, is a major step in the right direction. We did have support, um, from the MMA on this because the MMA has made this, uh, one of the cornerstone issues that they think it really needs to be addressed. And we were pleased that we were able to make a pretty good argument on behalf of the town and behalf of the Commonwealth today on that issue. So grateful to be, uh, grateful for Bill Yuckner and, and for Randy Skarland to, uh, to make, to assist me in that effort this afternoon. Um, we, as I pointed out, we did have a, a good meeting with, uh, Representative Barrows yesterday as well on the, on the, on the, on the land piece. And, um, we've been busy on a lot of different fronts. So, um, it's been, been a busy few weeks, but we have a lot going on that hopefully will get us wrapped up, for, ready for town meeting in just a few more weeks. Town meeting, just for everybody's edification, is March, is May fourteenth. So we're, we're just about six weeks away from that, that date. And, um, six weeks from tonight, I believe it is. So we will be, uh, moving, charging forward to finish everything up with the warrant. Everything's, uh, in place at this point. The, the, the meetings with the AdCom have been going very well. Um, they've been very, very informative, very instructive. And there's been good dialogue on, on all the articles. And, uh, just wanted to make that, make that point as well. All right, that's my report.
Can I just ask a question? Um, can you give us an update on the, uh, the sewer lines near the old fire station? And what's, what's...
They will be starting to work in there probably this month. They'll be back out there trying to, uh, finish the work that needed to be finished out there. So that's, that's clearly not done. They still need to be doing more work. I'm hoping that the whole thing will be done before, uh, before the end of this fiscal year. So we should be, should be wrapped up and at work. All right?
Phil, on that note, if it's okay, um, I know it's under construction. It's probably that they're not going to pave.
Yeah.
But it's horrendous to drive on my...
It is. I just actually drove that, I actually drove over today, Jim, so I agree with you. I'm actually going to take that up as part of my operations meeting tomorrow morning. So hopefully I can get out there and do some work.
And I know it's not the DPW that's doing the construction.
It's the contractor that's going to do that.
The contractor's going to do that work. The, the materials that are laden all over the side of the road, the pipes, the, totally disregard to anything that the DPW does.
Right.
As common practice.
Right. So we'll, uh, I'll, I'll take that issue up to my tent too, because I drove, I purposely drove over that street today to see what kind of condition. It's in tough shape. So I will certainly raise that issue. Um, and then, uh, we, we mentioned it just a few minutes ago, last, I did, I did want to make, mention the fact that we did reach out to, um, to, uh, to National Grid as requested by the board at the, I think it was your last meeting, indicating that they liked, that they, uh, if they will come out and just give us an indication as to how they fared during the last storms, also what their tree trimming plan is for, for the upcoming year, and, and, and sort of try to answer the question that there's a perception that, you know, Foxborough goes down maybe more than other communities. And, um, I've asked them to actually do a comparison of our community in comparison to other communities, and so that we can ever put that in perspective for you. And, um, again, this is up to, for them to report out to us, not, not intended to be a, uh, a, a session where we just take advantage of, you know, a, a public forum to, to, to beat them up or anything like that. But they, they actually were, were very willing to do that. So they, they thought it would be helpful to keep everybody informed what they're doing. Okay.
Yep. I have a few items. First, um, I just wanted to, I know several of the board members were there as well, congratulate Mike Johns on, and, uh, the VFW on the Vietnam Veterans Ceremony that took place, uh, last, a week ago Friday. Um, it was a really nice ceremony. Uh, US Representative Kennedy was there, and I was astounded at the number of, um, Foxborough and local Vietnam vets that were there. It was a really, really nice ceremony. So, um, just wanted to do a shout out to that group. Um, today, uh, our library director, Manny Lee, held a library staff development day. Uh, a number of us were asked to present to them. Sarah Ackerman and I did, um, anti-harassment discrimination training. Uh, Chief Baker presented workplace violence training. Um, I saw that, uh, on the agenda that Sue Tipp... I saw that on the agenda that Sue Thibodeau was there with regard to her, you know, service animals. So, it was really nice concept that Manny's doing. He brings his staff together. We do training and it was a great day. Wanted to also let people know, I'm not going to go through it in any detail because we're running late, but in your packet, I reminded last week, last meeting that on April 1st, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act took place. It's an addition to, an amendment to Mass. General Law 151B as, with all of the protected classes of employment. Pregnant workers are among those now. So, that's an amendment to the Mass. General Law 151B. If anybody needs any information on that, we will be having, putting it up on our website. And that took place on April 1st. Just wanted to let you know that Power Forward will be doing another mailing to households. We received notice, notification that that's our energy, electricity aggregation service. They'll be going out to 188 new National Grid basic, basic service customers in Foxborough. They'll be getting a mailing. It'll come out with the Town of Foxborough logo and say, "Do not discard. This is time-sensitive notification." The new supply price is 9.2, which is considerably lower than some of the others. There'll also be an opt-out card if people want to opt out. It's very well explained in a two-page color-coded letter. And if anybody has any questions, we'll have this information on our website and we'll have a frequently asked questions if you call.
Mr. Chairman, you had asked at one point whether or not it made sense for us to go out to bid now, and we actually got having that conversation next week.
Okay. Because our, our, our contract is up with the October read.
Right.
So, now, now is a good time.
Right.
Go out and, and rebid it.
Yeah, we've, we've had that conversation. We actually have a meeting set up, I believe it's not next week or the week after.
Okay.
Staying on that. Do we, can they, can they give us a, a number of households that participated in the program?
Sure, yeah. Well, we actually have that report.
We have a report on that. We can get you that.
And give us a comparison, what they saved versus what they would have paid if they stayed on basic service?
Okay.
Okay. We can ask for that.
Put that on the.
I, I think people will be amazed.
It is, it's significant, actually. It's very significant.
And it would be helpful if we maybe did a little customer service announcement on, at the next meeting, because they have until May 9th to get back, to respond to this. And as I said, it's going out on April 5th to all the household, to basic service people. So, we'll get you that for the next.
They just need to respond if they want to opt out, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
It's an automatic enrollment and they would have to send the card back if they're going to opt out. And then finally, I just wanted to mention to you, it's April again, which means it's Bill Keegan evaluation time. So.
What do you mean?
We're going to be debuting our new online performance evaluation software for you. So, what will happen is Bill will complete his self-evaluation and then we will email the form and that document to all of you. You can complete it online again and I'll compile it the way that we've done in past years. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Action names?
Okay. Move to approve the naming of River Ridge Subdivision Roadways. Roadway A to Souza Ave Avenue, Roadway B to Bemis Lane, and Roadway C to Foolish Hill Circle.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
No.
See none? All is in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $1,000 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan World Memorial from Fred and Carol Green.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Thank you for the generous gift.
Yep. How you doing, by the way?
I'm getting there.
Okay. All was in favor?
All right.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $50 to Veteran Services from John and Joan Hattigan.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none? All's in favor?
All right.
Move to accept a gift donation of $240 to the Council on Aging to help defray costs of programs at the Senior Center as agreed from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none? All's in favor?
All right.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $50 to the Council on Aging for the Lot Box Program from Anonymous.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none? All's in favor?
All right.
Move to accept a gift donation in, in the amount of $140 to Animal Control for the adoption fee from John Thibodeau.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none? All's in favor?
All right.
Move to approve a seven-day entertainment license and common victual license to the Hampton Inn and Suites in Foxborough.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Any word on how close they are to opening?
The, the hotel?
Yeah.
Uh, tomorrow?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's the plan, so.
You know, I have a question on that. Remember when they, they talked about a gateway sign coming into Foxborough?
Yeah. That's, the, the only thing that's holding that up right now, Jenny, is, is the, is the surge, yeah. So, we.
Is that where it's going to be?
No, it's actually going to be out on Route 140. So, but they'll, but when they do the construction, they'll finish that up.
Yes.
Okay.
All was in favor?
All right.
All right. Motion to go into executive session.
Move, move to, move into a executive session for negotiations, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for contract renewal with non-union personnel, Finance Director Randy Scollins, and also to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations for contract renewal with union AFSCME DPW, and also to conduct a strategy sessions relative to pending litigation. Do I also have to put, we will not be returning to regular session?
I don't believe there's any action outside the board, outside that session.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none? All's in favor?
All right.
Jenny?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
And after two years, I finally got that right.
Good job, Dan. Good night, everyone.
Good night.